All right, good evening and welcome to the September eighteenth, two thousand twenty-five meeting of the Milford School Committee. This meeting is being broadcast and recorded by Milford TV and any copies can be obtained at the request of this board or through Central Office. We have invitation to speak first tonight, but there is no one here, so we'll move on to announcements, correspondence, and distribution. Anybody have any announcements or anything? I see none. Bring us to the chairperson update. So I have just a couple of things for everybody. We met with Finance Committee. Last week, we talked about the HR audit stuff that went through. One update we got from the Finance Director of the town was that he was incredibly happy with the way the transition into the new year this year went compared to last year. He said everything was very smooth. There's been a lot of communication with Wen's office and with Central Office in general. I think it's been going really well there. And then there was the discussion as well about the MSBA High School Project where, for the most part, Chairman Bruce from the School Building Committee explained the whole process, the timeline. I think that FinCom left feeling way more informed about the project and how the process in general was going to look. It was made incredibly clear to them that we don't have numbers and won't for another year. So I think everybody's going to settle into some patience and hopefully we'll get that information sooner than later. Speaking of that, I'm actually going to kind of look at Chris and Michael. I know that the OPM process was, selection process was underway and getting close to finalized. Is that at a point to be spoken on yet or no?
No, the MSBA, so we, the OPM Subcommittee picked a vendor and then now it goes off to the MSBA for approval. Once they approve it, then it can be finalized.
Okay, so they're almost there. Another step in the right direction.
Exactly.
Lastly, there are two more meetings with the Finance Committee coming up Monday. I believe it's Monday, the twenty-second at six P M. That's a meeting with the Capital Subcommittee. Al requested our presence specifically because of the two articles that we will get to shortly. It was obviously something that they were not expecting, but due to the timing of our assessments, we didn't really have much of a choice. We're going to discuss that as it applies to the capital plan. And then on October second, the full Finance Committee will start their process of reviewing all of the articles. And that was the one that we were invited to for that as well. So I'll be going to both of those. And if anybody else cares to join in the fun, let me know. I know the one on Monday, the twenty-second, has been dual posted, so if you're interested and you want to come, it's open for all of us. With that, we'll move on to the Community Use Program Board Appointments. There are two seats that are open this year. I did speak with Mr. Burns about how things are going. He said that the group in general worked very well together over this past year. The recommendation that I have in front of you is that we will reappoint Tim Holt Snyder to a three-year term if everyone agrees. And then there will be an open seat for now because Judy Dagnes, who spent a lot of time in the last year, and honestly, I'm sure quite a bit of time over the decades in general for community use, is working on moving. I believe they're going down the Cape, so she has sent in her letter letting everybody know that she will not be re-upping the term as they will not be here anymore. So we can start with a motion to reappoint Tim Holt Snyder to a new three-year term, if that so exists.
I'll make that motion now.
Motion by Megan, second by Brendan. Is there any discussion on this? And all in favor? Janitor, thank you.
I have a question. I believe this was asked before. Does Community Use advertise?
So, I'll get to that.
Let me get known that they have a board?
Do they make it known that they have a board? I don't know the answer to that. But speaking of making it known, in the past, we have announced through our social media, we're going to do the same thing again, that there is going to be an opening on the Community Use Board. This is obviously a school committee appointment, and this position will be a three-year term. The deadline for submission will be September thirtieth of two thousand twenty-five, and that information can be emailed to me at mzakilia@milfordma.com. And this is obviously going out through all of the districts, means of communication, social media, and whatnot. So hopefully, we will get some interest in that again, and we'll run through the same process one more time. Brings us to the athletic update. Pete, if you're ready, please, come on up.
Oh, I'm tired now. I don't have sneakers or shoes. I have a blown-up ankle and I'm just humbling around here, so.
No worries.
I didn't want to.
Thanks for coming.
Sure, how's everybody doing?
Good.
Good stuff. So it had come to my attention, we wanted to talk a little bit about the Huddle Network, right? Equipment and uniforms. If you want, I can just give you a quick update or?
Yeah, that'd be great.
So I guess I'll go in order of what I have. So I'll start with the Huddle. There's been an evolution probably over the last decade. I'd say ten years ago, there was three or four national companies that you could sort of recruit or work with or just purchase. You know, being transparent, Huddle was very sharp. They bought all of them. So now it's Huddle coast-to-coast, California, all the way up to Vermont and Maine. So you really, you don't have much choice if you want to exchange films with other schools, right? So for example, in the Hockamock League, we are, it's in our bylaws that football, boys and girls lacrosse, boys and girls soccer, boys and girls basketball, we have to exchange film. You have to use Huddle. It's the only way to do it on a platform that everybody has and everybody can transfer it back and forth. I got a little ahead of myself. So Huddle again bought all of the companies. So basically, if you're in Massachusetts right now, you're using Huddle. If you're in New England, you're using Huddle. I can't one-hundred percent speak for way out in the West Coast, but I know Huddle has bought the three or four biggest ones in the country. So at this point, like ninety-nine point two percent of the schools in the MIA, basically the small, small, like Bethany Christian up the road, I don't believe they have Huddle. But if you're, if you're a good-sized school, if you're a good, you know, athletic department, then this is the program that you're using because your league is forcing you to go back and forth with those six or seven teams that I talked about. Some of the benefits that we would talk about, it's very easy to capture games, practices, and scrimmages. I can remember, you know, fifteen, twenty years ago coaching, and then twelve years ago landing here. You would have to film the scrimmage of the game or the practice, go home and splice it up yourself if you were going to show it to the team. Now, basically, all you do is you can just turn it on. It's in the gym, in our high school gym, it's on the turf. And all you have to do is hit a couple of buttons, tell them what you want, and they splice it up. It's A I., I believe. Or if you wanted to say, you know, Chris Wilson number two, Megan Hornberger number three, if you wanted to grab all their data, it just comes in, you can see their clips, and you can also see what their percentages are depending on what sport it is. So it's super helpful. For us, it's progressive coaching, scouting, and recruiting, right? Like we are, and I'm very proud of this, I know you are too, we're batting three or four times above the national average of the kids that we put into the N C A. With a hundred, a hundred and two, a hundred and five that we graduate every year for seniors, we should have maybe three to five that are going into the N C A. We're always, we're always at that nineteen, twenty, twenty-one, twenty-two mark. Doesn't have a lot to do with me, that's a lot of you folks. It's the lineage, it's people in Milford, it's just, we just try to perpetuate that. We encourage that. With the scouting and recruiting, it's super easy. Most colleges, if they're recruiting you, they want a two- or three-minute video. We can do that. What we try to do is capture as much film as we can throughout the season, and then when a particular school checks in, we just pull it. And then we try to get the best, you know, obviously, you want to get your best plays, your best moves, everything you're doing out there. We'll cut that up to about two and a half, three minutes, and then we'll send that to the college coaches that you're asking us to do that for. If you take a look at the chronological evolution right at Milford, right? Again, I made the reference, I was coaching in the early nineties, and you had to do all this yourself. With how this worked with us, so we did, I think we had Huddle before I got here. A couple of, I think football and boys' basketball was using it. Huddle was new, this film exchange was new, the technology was new. So it grew, small companies, Huddle became bigger, bought everybody out. So what we decided to do at that point, we started to look at the packages. We wanted to save money. So we got the teams together that wanted to use it in the gym, and we picked up like maybe the bronze package to begin with, right? That came with a free camera, so we were able to have that installed in the gym. That cost nothing. That was great because we did that in-house. Milford took care of that, the technology department, and really, the custodial crew. So they, that was fantastic, right? Phase two, to be perfectly honest, we didn't jump on that right away. They were these, sort of, they looked like UFOs. They had these twenty-foot extenders, you had them out at the turf. You could take them to any field you wanted, but you needed a power source. So we kept using our own cameras, and you could upload to Huddle at that time. When phase three came in, then we became interested because it was secure. You could lock it in somewhere. It looked perfect. We had it, Tim Curden was very helpful doing the specs, taking a peek at could we, could we mount this at the turf with the press box? Worked perfectly right below the fence that we have on the top there. So we did go ahead, and there was a promotional, we got the camera for free, we just had to pay for the installation. And what happened there was, again, Tim Curden was very, very creative, figured out how to swap some things out, do some things with our own department. And what we ended up doing was, any turf teams that wanted to utilize it, they ended up paying about two hundred dollars apiece through the boosters department, which, I got to be honest, it probably should have been close to five thousand dollars total. I think Tim got it down to about nine, nine ninety-five, nine ninety-seven, if my memory serves correctly. So we probably had the best deal going, to be honest with you, in the area, or just about anywhere. So financial evolution, who's paying for it? So the boosters covered the costs up till about five years ago. The cost in the beginning was fifteen hundred, then jumped to twenty-seven, thirty-five. When it got to about five thousand, the booster presidents, the gridiron presidents checked in. They were getting a little concerned that this was getting a little too large. This is mostly the boosters, it wasn't at the turf yet. When it got to eight thousand, that's when Wen's predecessor, our CFO, Kathy got involved, and they agreed to split the eight thousand. So it was four and four. And then when it jumped to ten, Kathy and the boosters talked, and Kathy worked out a situation where she could, or we could absorb the entire bill. So that's where we're at now. We're at the gold level, and we're at the situation where any team that wants to use it in the gym or on the turf, we have enough accounts where we can do that. And we just activated, we just brought girls soccer online full this season. We have the technology to do that with them and whatnot, so we feel pretty good about that. That's my Huddle story.
I apologize on that, then. Any thoughts, follow-up questions on this?
Yeah, sorry to be direct. How do I want to say this? I guess, why is this so important? You're leading with Huddle as like the athletic director of the, so I'm just confused, why is this important to the committee? Are you asking for something?
I was asked to present on it. I was asked to present on Huddle.
Okay.
If I could, that was a future item request, and then the specific questions and concerns were around the Huddle stuff and the budgetary impact.
Okay. I think this was a camera that was donated that we made some comments, I think, last year, the year before, that school committee should have accepted it, which is perfectly fine.
Okay.
Yeah, so is this that camera that was donated, it was installed? And then we had some questions on like who paid for the, you know, the installation and who pays for the subscription fees?
Yes, this is probably what you folks were talking about then, yes, yeah.
Did you remember that?
Yes.
Okay, okay.
I think you just addressed.
Yeah, yeah, I'm sure it's all the same thing.
Yeah.
Yeah, I was just, okay, now I'm putting all together.
Yeah, no, I apologize. It seemed like I was supporting or, you know, pleading for, this was, I just wanted to sort of encapsulate an executive summary of what it is, how we use it, and how did it get funded?
Do all the teams get to use it?
Anybody who wants to use it, we have enough accounts that they can use, yes.
Great, thanks.
Can I ask the same question differently, Pete? Is there anyone who could be using it who's not?
All of our turf teams are using it.
Yep.
Boys and girls, just thinking. The only team that doesn't use it, being transparent, and it's because they, they just like to do things their own way, is wrestling.
Okay.
Right, so honestly, Coach Pinto, Jose Pinto comes in, he runs his own, they, they like to, you know, spice it up themselves and whatnot. If we are recruiting, we can turn it on. We've had a lot of wrestlers go into the N C A the last couple of years, especially throughout, you know, Milford's lineage, but the last couple of years, it's been a lot, so that's the one.
Just from an equity standpoint, I'd like to know that every team that could be using it has the opportunity.
Yes, yes, yeah. Wrestling is sparing, but when it comes down to the recruiting, that's something that we jump in.
Is there any special skill set to use it, or is it just?
Good question. So basically, it's just, it's me creating an account for the team, encouraging you to upload the app, and then we get together, I contact the company, we get a username, we get the code, and then we get the, to be perfectly honest, we try to have a, on each coaching staff, what we've tried to do, because Huddle is so important right now, especially with like scouting teams and whatnot, we try to make sure that one coach on every team's staff can sort of be like their technology contact person and be able to run that. So that's where it's going.
Great, yeah, these are the questions we, I think, had last year, is making sure it was equitable, everybody can use it, et cetera, et cetera.
Yeah, no, these are good questions, and we worked out to do that.
Thanks.
Yeah, I appreciate the overview. Actually, I was the one who wanted to ask a little bit more about it, just because I can see this cost going up, just because I just know where, you know, these services are going. So I guess, you know, from our perspective, how we're planning for your budget, making sure that that's going to be built into it in the future. And then obviously, if they have a package where you can, you know, buy several years upfront, like, you know, lower that cost.
Yes, yes. We're waiting for that, yes. That's a really good point. Like, that's not out there right now that we're capable of with the amount of teams that we need and whatnot, but we're watching, it's a good, it's a really good point.
Yeah, and then I guess if the Hock is requiring this, is there like a league discount? Because, I mean, Huddle's definitely benefiting from your committee.
Here's the, that's a great question, too. We looked into that, and Huddle said no.
I figured.
Because they're the only show town. Before, there was a couple like Titan Sports and whatnot, but they bought Titan Sports, so.
Yeah.
We might have had a chance, but we definitely have tried to stay out and be progressive with this, but.
For sure.
They know what they're doing.
Yeah, and those web server costs are just going higher and higher, so I expect that bill to go higher.
I think it'll be probably a ten to fifteen percent increase every year.
Do you store any of the information offline? Do you download anything? Or is it, if Huddle were to go away, so I'm guessing it's cloud-based.
Yes, yeah, we have access to all of our stuff. That's a good question, too. And if we wanted to, we could pull up anything that we've downloaded in the past. Like, to be honest with you, I've been talking about Coach Dale. We've been looking at a couple of teams that we're going to play later in the season, what are their tendencies? They've got a couple returning running backs, are they still running the same scheme? So he's looking at last year, the year before, giving this away, I hope nobody from Rent them or North Fork Playoffs watching, but they might be doing the same thing. But yes, good question. We have access to everything that we have looked at in the past up until tonight when we upload probably boys and girls soccer.
Okay. Go ahead. Back to the subscription, so yeah, it's a yearly subscription, just under ten thousand dollars, you said?
It's a little over, it's right on eleven now.
Eleven, eleven, okay, sorry, eleven thousand. And it sounds like, yeah, so there is, there is no, to Brendan's point, there's no like area, I want to buy in the next five years.
Not yet.
Nothing.
Yeah, we've been watching for that, and the league has asked a couple of times, like, is that coming? There are bigger packages.
Yeah.
But you have to pay more. You know, you take a team, you look at a school like Brockton, that we have like thirty-three varsity sports, they probably have like forty-two or forty-three. So they might buy a certain package, and they might have the opportunity to buy extended. That was something that Kathy and even Wen has mentioned, we like, hey, can we keep an eye on this? And we're trying to do that.
And that, that eleven thousand dollar subscription, is it a certain amount of licenses, unlimited licenses, or just enough that we can?
Good question. So it's, so I think it's thirty-five.
Thirty-five, okay.
And we use, we can use up, we have thirty-one that we could deploy to our teams, yeah. These are good questions.
All right, and then to Megan's point, from the equity, the only field I know then that varsity plays on would be Woodland for field hockey.
Yes.
Any, there's, I'm assuming there's no coverage up there?
They, if they, if they choose to videotape their games, they can do that, and then we can upload that to them.
Do we have?
We don't have a camera.
We don't have a camera?
No.
So then, for that, an additional camera and a portable system for Woodland to cover field hockey?
Yeah.
Do you know kind of ballpark what that costs?
So camera, the other challenge to be, again, to be transparent, is there's no definitive power source up there. Those like, like at the high school, at the base, there's, you can plug in. At Woodland, they didn't do that. So we would probably have to run a line from the high school, I'm sorry, from the middle school. Or one of the things, a couple of people checked in about, are that we have power packs that we can use now, too.
Yeah, right, exactly.
We just grabbed one of those for our scoreboard, so that's possible.
Any idea what the cost of that?
You're probably looking ballpark like five thousand, fifty, five hundred total.
And that's for the tripod with the camera?
That would be it, yes, yeah, the camera.
Like you said, just from an equity, that's, I know.
You got baseball on top.
Yeah, and the grass fields, too, like, yeah.
Yeah, well, I'm saying, I'm just thinking right now, at least from the varsity sport standpoint, that, that baseball, I believe, has some type of tracking software that they bought a few years ago.
Yes, it's separate from Huddle, yes.
And I believe that softball can also use this.
Yes, yes. We get a discount because we use both, and I'm fairly certain that Legion has jumped in, so it's even cut down.
Yeah, it's not as much of a video, if I recall, so I don't want to get too far down that road.
It's mostly data, yeah.
But anyways, as with, as you're considering for the budget, right?
Yeah.
That Woodland would be that only other spot where?
I can look into that if you want.
At five thousand, is that something that we need to consider? I don't know, but I just wanted to bring that up.
We should definitely talk about it in budget time, so if you could make sure to put a note to that for?
Can youth sports tap into it?
Yes, good question, yes. Yeah, we have just partnered with Milford Youth Football, asked to start using it last year. We found out that they could use our license, so now they do have an account, and they use that as well. At their, and we could do that with soccer if they, if they choose to go in that direction to use soccer. Anybody who gets on the turf, we could probably have sort of like an under, what's the word? Underaccount, and make that available for them.
Easy question. So since we're recording students, is there any privacy or permissions needed from the parents to ensure that?
Yes, yeah, that's a good question, too. So we have embedded that in family ID. So when a student registers, the parents or guardians either check yes, it's no problem, or no, I don't want my kid filmed. And to be perfect, it's like ninety-nine point nine 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 percent, everybody's okay, because they love social media and whatnot. But we do keep an eye on that. And every once in a while, we'll get a team that comes in where, you know, they'll say, hey, number seven on this particular team. You can videotape for the game, you cannot allow that to go into social media if you take any pictures or whatnot, so we have to be cognizant of that, yes.
Great, thank you.
All right, one more, go ahead.
Is there any other questions for Pete? I just wanted to mention something quickly. I had a conversation with Pete recently, and I'll mention it just because it's Budget Subcommittee. Two of the sports, football, basketball, are the only two sports where they charge an entry fee to the students. I brought it up to Pete, like, hey, why are we charging entry fee to the students? They're going there to support. So try in a way of helping to promote more of our students going, do we look at a way of, or do we look at eliminating the entry fees, but we'd have to, again, from the budget side, backfill his sports budget to be able to offset those costs?
Did you vote to not have fees for activities?
That's fees for the sport, not to go watch it. Like, if you're at a football game, you pay to get in.
Oh, so again.
Which was super helpful, by the way. Removing the fees has been wonderful.
Yeah, so again, something for Budget Subcommittee to take into consideration, just bringing the idea up now with Pete here, and go from there.
You can get a budget, like, idea of that, what that cost would have looked like that be.
Sure, sure, yeah, I can do that. And just, I love mentioning this because it's one of the things that most probably is when other, other teams in the league have now moved in our direction of trying to remove the user fees. They've sought, they've seen how well it's working here and what it's done for our kids and our families and whatnot. So there's multiple, if not at least three or four, that have either implemented that or they're moving in that direction. And we are leading the charge there, so I want to pat everybody on the back from wherever that came from and however we started to get that going, so thank you.
Yeah, Mike, it's not, it's the admission fee into the sporting event.
I'm curious, I do have one more.
Yeah, no, that's okay.
Pete, so you had said like, it's called Huddle, so I'm guessing the very beginning of it is football.
You said it was basketball and soccer as well.
From phase two, did anyone, like, how did you decide which teams got that? Did they have to request it, or? And which teams were they? Like, who was the next?
Well, so like, what was our phase?
Yes.
We didn't grab the phase-two camera, to be honest with you. We watched other teams come in with it. We'd get knocked over in the wind, it would break, it would be unreliable, so we're like, we had our own cameras to be, the booster club had bought like five cameras that we could use, and at that point in time, you could upload to Huddle. They were still evolving in what they could do from a technology, technological perspective.
I guess what I'm looking for is like a historical context, which teams got it first?
So boys' and girls' basketball were first.
Okay.
In the gym. And then that, let me just take a look at the code. So then that moved to our volleyball team, because it was already in the gym. We had boys, we had boys in the spring, girls in the fall. And then teams started, phase two really spawned phase three, because football teams were coming in with these elaborate scaffolding for that camera, right? And then it just evolved into, why are we not just securing these services?
Right.
So football started to use it, then boys lacrosse started to use it, girls, and we said, we just need to get a camera now at this point and move from there, so.
Gotcha, thank you.
Sure.
All right, the other part of the discussion was just around uniforms and equipment, stuff like that. I know during budget time, we did not, obviously.
Yeah, sure, I apologize.
Bought everything that you were, you were looking for, so we're just curious in terms of how that's going with the equipment and such.
No, thank you for checking in. So the equipment, we feel like we have effectively reestablished where we want to be, to be, again, to be transparent from last year. We didn't really go without, we just cut down a little bit. If we typically order so many soccer balls, we went with, all right, willing to own this many. They're expensive, same thing, volleyballs, footballs, anything that was equipment-based and whatnot, the combustibles you have to buy every year, and they just get beat up, and you have to throw them out. The stuff that we felt we could get to the end of the season with, we did, and that worked this year. I've been working, you know, with Wen and Dr. Consigli, we feel like we're back where we need to be. So let's say it's the last week of the season, I don't have to run Tapolios to get a couple of soccer balls or whatnot, you're not running over somewhere. We feel like we have what we need, and we have a couple, I always put a couple aside for every sport, just in case we get, you know, when we get into the playoffs or we're running out of stuff. So this year, we feel really good about that. As far as the uniforms, you know, last year, everybody had to pitch in, right? So one of the things that we felt we could give up and made sense to be reasonable within the district was we gave up our uniforms, okay? When I arrived twelve years ago, we, I couldn't get my hands on a really effective uniform rotation, so we built one. And what we did is, we came to the conclusion, working with central office and whatnot, that every varsity team would buy new uniforms every four years, and then we would drop those down. At some point, we determined that we were getting a really good deal from Under Armour. We felt like that was great for the kids. It was really good product. And it was a good recruiting tool, to be honest with you. Like, kids like wearing Under Armour. They love saying, oh, we have this, you know, and all that fun stuff. So what we did last year is I just, I communicated with all the teams who were expecting to get new uniforms. And I said, we're hoping to get back to that next year. Let's see where the budget goes. And I was, again, being honest. We, we really made things work last year. You folks were very supportive. Central Office was very supportive. So we felt like that was a fair situation for us to just wait one year. We were in a good situation. None of our uniforms are in desperate need. So what we're doing right now is we're working up twenty-four, twenty-five, and we'll just be a year behind unless we get a different sort of direction. And we feel like that's okay. Like, we feel like that's a good place to be. We've got ten years of rotating now, and everybody's received new uniforms a couple of times over. So we feel like we're a good place. I just want to be honest. Like, I didn't want to come in and, hey, we need new uniforms. We're in a pretty good place. So we feel like we can, we can absorb what happened last year, and press forward and instill a professional in what we're doing.
Excellent. Last question, well, for me at least. In the past couple of years, there's been some, I guess, concerns of making sure that the teams or the boosters, whoever it is, when they're raising money for whatever it is, that they're not requiring students to raise money.
Yes, yeah.
At that point, it's almost like an activity fee. I just want to make sure and reiterate that, you know, we really don't want that. And I know the past few years, there's been some questions. So just, you know, please make sure that.
Yes, yeah.
If boosters or whoever's doing fundraising, that they're not requiring the students to do this.
No, I've checked in on that. Principal Ottman checks in on that. Like, he actually sends a direct email. We check in with coach. I have a conversation with each coach a couple of times over at the beginning of the season. We have a midseason check-in. We, you know, we do fundraise, but we make sure from a top-down perspective that each student doesn't feel pressure. And I think we have to watch the companies that we work with, right? Some companies will come in, you have to. We're like, no, no. And then, you know, then we have to stop them in their presentation and whatnot. So we do try to watch that closely. I review. As a guy who had two kids going through, it's like, how much can you fundraise? I definitely understand.
Thank you. Anything else?
Just quickly, Matt. Pete, you spoke to sort of the elimination of fees and how good that was with the program. Could you just speak to numbers generally in terms of kind of how you're seeing participation overall the past couple of years?
Yeah, sure. And I know there were some questions about that. And Dr. Consigli and I said, we're going to try to pull something. This is something we're working on.
To that point.
We can do that later.
Yeah, I had asked Pete if that, if he was going to be presenting anything like that tonight.
Sure.
Came back and said they just, it was more in lines of budgetary stuff.
Email update is great also.
To your point, I'd like to, yeah, to your point, I'd like to see that also, right? Because with the elimination of fees, what have our trends done?
Great.
You know, both from, from a overall and from a sport to sports.
Yes.
Middle school, too, right, Pete? We're out of the track. Like, it's amazing, the engagement. It's awesome at Stacy's.
My head is still spinning from today. Like, we had a hundred and eighty kids. Not just from Milford, but, you know, we had fifty-something of our own kids.
It's pretty cool.
From middle school. Thank you for saying that. Like, it's, it has definitely helped certain sports of where we, you know, demographically might be able to say that it was difficult to get use of fees and maybe kids were averting from that. I can generally say that, you know, in this country right now, there's a challenge. Kids are not participating the way they used to. There's reasons for that. And I'll try to capture all that for you and what our numbers look like. There's a lot of things that we've been working on the last couple of years, and we've been really creative, Dr. Consigli and I. We're going to start to move in different directions and really, K to twelve is where we want to be right now. We've been six to twelve for a long time. When he was principal, we did a lot of work at Woodland when he was there. But I think we agree that that's, we want to go K to twelve now, and we really want to expose kids to sports in different manners that don't cost a lot of money or zero financial impact to their families. And we're going to combine with Chris Burns and see if we can move forward.
Look forward to hearing what. Thanks.
Because it's challenging. Like, it's, but that's countrywide. It's like even, pick a school, and their numbers are down a little bit.
Thanks.
Thanks for coming. That was a great update.
Yeah, thank you. I appreciate it. It's good to see you all.
Thank you.
Thank you, thank you.
Thanks, Pete.
Can you help? I refuse to use Project, so.
Better question. Want to raise?
Yeah, want to raise. You know what? Maybe, maybe fifty, I don't know. Thanks, everybody. See you.
Thank you.
All right, we'll go to the EV charging stations. If you guys recall, some months ago, we started a discussion with potentially bringing in charging stations at each location, potentially at the school, I should say, and that was pushed down to the facilities group. I'll ask Chris to give a super high-level, I guess, overview of where that landed, but the agenda does have more detailed information in it.
Hopefully, everybody got my email from earlier. Apologize for the late submission of it. But, yeah, the Facility Subcommittee reviewed the EV charging station proposal at a meeting a few months ago. I'm going to read fast on this because everybody has it in front of them. There were two options proposed from the EV charging stations, a full ownership and a leasing slash rental agreement of the equipment. If we did full ownership, and this came from town council, if the school department accepts the stations fully with outright ownership, then any liability due to negligent maintenance of any of them would be on the schools and by extension, the town's responsibility. Also, the schools would be responsible for any damage to them as well. Although grants may be available to offset the installation costs, the usefulness of the life of a station is approximately five years. Replacement cost is $2,000 per charger. And also, if the school department were to own and operate, the town will be responsible for the following: cost of electricity, maintenance, insurance, transaction costs, and making sure the charging stations are in working order and not blocked. If we went through the rental side of it, again, from town council, conversely, if the schools were to lease or rent the stations with the ownership vested in a third party, then absent any language to the contrary in the leasing, lease documents, which is a big question, the third party would be responsible for liability and damage. If this were the case, then the schools would be looking, looking for identification language in the agreement. So, yeah, again, in East Coast Renewable, from the own and operating side, they would cover all the costs, right? Checks to repay the town, you know, the profit sharing's at fifty percent. You know, they would have to create an LLC, which I wasn't quite sure on how that all works. Was the town added to the LLC? That's more of a town council question. So again, those are some of the issues within it. And I guess, you know, so overall, the, you know, the Subcommittee discussed the pros and cons of the proposal. Some areas of concern were the already significantly limited parking at Memorial, Brookside, and Stacy. Reallocating parking for electric vehicles only would worsen the limited parking availability. Although we did not conduct a full survey of staff, we discussed most EV owners charge their vehicles at home at a lower rate than the EV charging stations would provide. Milford High School will be under some sort of, some form of construction within the next few years, making that school a non-viable site. Although Woodland typically has open parking spaces, the distance, the utility infrastructure has to run from the power source to the parking spaces would include and implemented costs to Milford Public Schools. So the Facility Subcommittee unanimously voted to extend an unfavorable recommendation to this committee and felt a full committee vote should be taken on this type of proposal. Any questions?
No? All right.
I want to say that. We are, yeah, so, yeah, basically, at this point, like I said, I felt like it's a full committee decision. So whether or not we want to proceed with this gentleman's proposal or just say we're done with it.
We don't necessarily have to vote on it. We can just say, we heard the proposal and we choose not to go forward.
I like that one.
That work for you?
That works. That works for me, too.
Can I just add the comment? I'd love to see it contemplated as we're moving forward with the MHS project. So to be some component of that, I think it's a great idea generally. I think space, we have many constraints, so that we may only ask in conjunction with.
I will say, in our discussion, we talked about this in terms of what it looked like if we put it in now. And then did the construction and the timing of renewing it again. One of those thoughts was, why would we not just wait and potentially build it right into the building project if that is something that comes down?
Okay, thanks.
Yeah, and to that point, a lot of times for planning board, when a company comes and they're going to do like a significant change to their parking lot, we tell them like, hey, at least run the underground infrastructure, so that way, if comes a time to put in those charging units, it's there without having to create a new trench. So that will definitely happen with the new high school project.
All right, so move on from that. That brings us to the town meeting warrant articles discussion. So, um, where do we want to start on that?
Want me to talk through it?
Yeah, please. Why don't we start with the Stacy one? That's kind of a big one.
So, the, let me give you some history on this. I'm not sure if everyone's aware, but the, um, Facility Subcommittee asked, asked us to do, I think it was just the Subcommittee, I'm not sure if it was the Full Committee, asked us to do a HVAC assessment at Stacy Middle School. The HVAC assessment came back with some pretty significant upgrades and fixes that needed to be done. Basically, we're talking about a thirty-year-old heating system that has seen some, I would say, minimal upgrades. I think that the hot water tanks or the, I think it was the hot water tanks were redone a couple of years ago. But basically, all the, all the components on the roof are thirty years old. All the heater systems in the classrooms are all thirty years old. The controls are all thirty years old. So all the major components that are controlling heating and cooling in that school basically need to be redone. End of life is twenty-five to thirty years, so we're living on borrowed time. We asked them to go back. So we had talked about this. And originally, what they had said to us, if all things are working correctly, the first thing, if you're going to do this phased in, the first thing you should do is just look at the heater systems in the classroom, right? But to do that, it takes a significant amount of time because you have to order, you have to put them out to bid. Then you, somebody wins a bid, then they have to build all the units out, then they have to come in, uninstall what's here, put the other ones in. So, and then that installation process is two months on its own. So that, if we went in that direction, that would be a summer project anyways. So we asked them to come back out and check out anything that, just check the whole system and see what's currently not working. So they're coming back with recommendations tomorrow for a phased-in process. I asked them to give us something that would be maybe phased in over five years. But again, keep in mind, we're living in really borrowed time. So at any point, any of these systems could, could break down and there's no really, in order to fix them, they don't make the parts to fix them. So you'd have to replace the whole unit anyways. And if you have to replace the unit, it's not something that you could say, hey, I need this unit tomorrow. It's something that would have to be ordered and then built and then brought in. It's looking like there is at least one or two roof units that are inoperable at this point. That probably would, would be the first things that we would work on. I know that over the last year or so, we've heard about fluctuating heat at Stacy or inconsistent heat. Sometimes it's hot in this room, sometimes it's cool in this room. Hopefully, this is going to solve these issues. Obviously, when we do the whole thing, we would expect that all these issues are cleaned up. But hopefully, some of these issues will be cleaned up with whatever priorities they give us for moving forward. And then we have to just talk it through with the town and give them a number. I'm not prepared to give you a number right now. I know they, they put some numbers on it, but they were rough numbers.
Who's they?
The company that did the assessment for us. So that's where we are.
I think the only thing I would add, obviously, is we all know the outlook of this building and the hope to get eighth grade here when something gets done. And the whole point of all of that is to also relieve the pressure on Stacy, which would give us an opportunity to keep that building and really facelift it without having to rebuild it. This is an investment. It's a big one, but it's one that has to be done. And I think we've all had this discussion at one point or another. Just because we're focused on this one doesn't mean we can't, we can lose focus on these other buildings. And this is one of the major problems. We did, as the Facility Subcommittee toured some of those rooms last winter when the temperatures were wild swings. And it's unfortunate. It can be uncomfortable. And if, if we can support anything to make that better by next winter, I think obviously we should be doing that, so.
I guess one, I'm sorry. One thing I wanted to add is, in order to do it right also, you'd have to change the controls and the heaters at the same time. You can't do one and then the other. They have to be done at the same time, otherwise, just the components aren't going to function correctly. So if you put in new heaters but have old controls, the old controls aren't going to control the new heaters.
Exactly, yeah. And I think everybody remembers a couple of years ago, we put in a new boiler. It cost, I think, like 1.2 million dollars. So that's our, that's the, the source of the hot water. And then each classroom has those, as we said, like an individual unit, and that grabs that hot water out of this brand-new boiler. It's going up to these thirty-year-old units, almost like what you'd see in a hotel room. So the means of which those thirty-two-year-old, thirty-year-old units are trying to grab the hot water, they're just, they're inefficient. They're not working properly. So that's why, so when you think about, we've already invested 1.2 million dollars or $650,000 of our money in the kind of the basement where the hot water's being created. We just now need to start looking at, at it from each classroom and upgrading those units. As well as, as Craig said, there are some rooftop units that have a little bit different functionality, and those being up on a roof, as you can imagine, New England summers and winters, they, they get beat up and they, they wear out. So, yeah, so again, the report's great to be able to look back on. It really is, in a sense, comprehensive and gave us a good picture of where and why. So now it's just a matter of kind of setting forth a plan to be fiscally responsible and also making sure that we give the staff and students, you know, the best possible learning environment.
So in terms of the article, I'll just kind of bring it back to that. The intent tonight is to get the approval to keep this article in the hands of town meeting to move forward with it. The value that will end up on here will be whatever is recommended to be the most important thing to fix as soon as possible. And speaking to FinCon, if we want to do something over the summer, next month is the time to get the okay for it. So the article would be just for those priorities. And then, meeting with Capitol Committee, we're also going to try to lay this plan out way more, I think intentionally, so that these things can be planned and they know what's coming as we go.
That was going to be my only comment, is that, to your point, Craig, right, it's thirty years old. It's already passed its useful life. It was never on our plan. And so I view that as amiss on our side. Taking the high school side, we already are going to address that in totality. I definitely want to make sure that we're putting forth the effort to identify the next thing that's going to fall off, just so that there are no surprises, because I don't think it reflects well. You don't know when it's going to break, but to have some indication, even if it's a few years out, just so it's there. Go ahead, sorry.
One thing I want to add.
Yep.
Since we did this assessment, we are also asking the company to give us a quote to assess the heating system at Memorial and the heating system at Brookside.
And I know that was Carter Parlos's initial getting to learn the buildings and all that. I just think investing in that now would be very worthwhile. So I just want to say, thank you for taking that on in addition.
We don't have any paperwork for any of that stuff.
Understood. No, understood.
And so also thinking about when's the right time to get an assessment on Woodland, because Woodland is ten years old, believe it or not. And some of those units are, have an end of life of ten or fifteen years. So we might have, we might have to do Woodland, too.
I would say, too, that it seemed like it was more beneficial, even though Carlos came in. And our facilities team in general does a really good job, but they're a smaller team. And I think it's hard for them to be at five different buildings running around, then also stop and see back. So it seemed like we learned, bringing somebody in who doesn't know what this is and hasn't seen it, who's just going to go through and just tear the place apart, was eye-opening, was way more beneficial than I think we thought it would be. So running that through all the buildings, I think, is going to give us a lot more information to have a more strategic plan than what we've been using. So totally agree with that. Anything else on this article?
I move to accept the warrant as presented.
Motion by Michael, second by Chris. All in favor? unanimous. Thank you for that one. We'll move on to the technology article that will also be sent along. We hope.
All right, so, I, I guess if we think of this in almost phases, right? So the phone system that we have is end of life. And again, we're working on borrowed time. So the current system, and Matt, stop if I'm wrong anywhere, but the current system we have is no longer supported. And so if anything fails, we have zero support to get it back up and running. So I guess what that means is if our phones go down, they go down, and I don't know when they, we get them back, right?
That pretty much summarizes. It's a, it's a, it's a hit from both sides. It's the phone system, which is a Cisco product, is end of life. You can upgrade it. But to upgrade it, you need to upgrade the hardware. To upgrade the hardware, we have to pay for a license, because back when this was initially installed, the license for VMware was part of it. It was included in Cisco, it was free. Now it's not. We just talked about Huddle subscriptions going up. VM's doing the same thing. So you have to pay for that to upgrade the hardware, to upgrade the software, so that your phones will stay up and working. And that's pretty much that piece.
And this was planned.
This is in there, yeah.
It's been known.
The number.
I remember talking about this the past few years, so.
You're not going to see the number of 160, because a 160 is, has like three or four things combined. But there, the three or four things combined are in the capital plan. But then the next phase of that is, I think, 750 for actual handsets.
Yeah, so that discussion, in full disclosure, I had with Tim as well. I can see your face. Yeah, there's one, there was one back here. There's a transition that everybody's going through. I see it a lot in my day job where you have to find a way to take the step from the localized phone system and dealing with the support to getting to the cloud, which is more desirable and cost-effective because of these services. But in the process, the hardware doesn't comply. So you have to replace. Most people get stuck in a place where they're replacing fifty to eighty percent of their hardware in one swing. So the plan, I would hope, over time, will be to, if the goal is three years from now to be in the cloud, take two to cycle through your hardware and get yourself in a position where it's not as painful in one shot. It can be done in one shot, but it's, as you can tell, not pleasant by any means, so.
The only thing I'd layer on to the warrant ask, Matt, is that the Budget Committee, Budget Subcommittee did sit with Tim, and he actually took off some of his requests. So every effort was made to make this as small as possible. So I just wanted to give him kudos for taking the time to meet with us and go through that, so.
He did. I will, I will admit, when he first told me, I laughed. And he said, I know. So he's obviously very much in line with what we're trying to accomplish, and it's great that we have these guys thinking this way.
Are we concerned about any increase in cost between now and when the time this article hopefully gets passed? In terms of like any new tariffs or, like, is the 160 going to be sufficient for what we're looking, or do we need to say 170 and return 10?
I don't know if we can, I don't know if we can speak on that. I can tell you just from my professional standpoint, I have not seen any roadblocks in the last, like, six months.
I guess the one thing we didn't say is the 160 is our cost of the project.
Yeah.
The E-rate is picking up the rest. I'm not exactly sure what the rest is, but it's, 160 is the, the better part of.
Larger projects.
Larger projects.
That's the part we wanted.
As you'll see in Section D in the first half, too, there are wireless, there's wireless equipment that is also end of life. That stuff is constantly cycling out of existence. So I think that's something that gets replaced almost yearly. Obviously, this is a necessary piece. One, phones ringing is kind of helpful. And two, wireless, we rely so much on the technology now, you don't really have a choice anymore other than to keep your network infrastructure running at high speeds so that everything can operate. So any other questions on that?
I'm like, I motion to move the article forward.
Motion by Megan, second by Derek. All in favor? Unanimous? Thank you. All right. Policy time. We have a few to hopefully talk about.
Fourteen. Thirteen.
Four minutes.
Okay, we'll do it in four minutes. All right. So, hi, everybody. Policies Subcommittee's been busy. Big shout-out to Melissa. She put most of this together, so thank you for all the hard work. And thanks for, Craig, for putting up with all of this. So what we're going to do is, roll through this first. So the first, what I'd like to do is, at the bottom, we're going to retire the following policies. There's three of them. EBCC, EBCFA, EBCD-dash-E. I'd like to do that in one block. These were recommendations from the administrator. One of the following, the last one, school closings, is actually being updated in the list above. So any objections to retiring those three policies?
Is there a motion to retire those in one swing?
I'll motion to retire the three policy listing.
Motion by Brendan, second by Derek. All in favor? Alright, so I'm going to go one by one and what we're going to do is, we're going to, um, I'll say the policy that we're talking about, see if there's anybody in discussion. And then we're going to go through, through discussion first and then we're going to go back and actually vote them all in one by one. Sound good?
Mm-hmm, sure.
That's the, we're supposed to coordinate our policy, policy, policy. Alright, so file EB, safety program. Subcommittees were recommending to replace the existing policy with the MSAC model policy. So for those who don't know, the MSAC has, you know, model policies that all districts can use. And so when the subcommittee is saying, we're just replacing with a model policy, literally it's just taking model policy with very minor tweaks.
Is this when I ask the questions?
Yeah, ask questions.
Craig, could you just explain, it talks about within the safety policy that we actually provide instruction on traffic bicycle and pedestrian safety? Where and what, and what, when would that be provided?
Be in the health programs.
Thank you. Thanks, Michael.
I think that we need to, based on recent events.
It just came, I, when I was reading this, it felt very relevant and so I was just wondering if there was some enhancement we could offer.
I think we should do something at our elementary schools.
The E scooter and bike thing is also very terrifying, so.
Yeah, so Chris is also, has already requested of the superintendent and the policies subcommittee to, to address this, so. I think this is a foundation to start.
Back and forth here.
Thanks.
And we're working on that with the police.
Okay, thank you.
Alright, file EBAB, pest management. The, the subcommittee is recommending to add text from the MSAC model policy to the existing policy that we have. It's really exciting. And you'll see it's highlighted, again, Melissa did a fantastic job. Any questions or comments on that policy? No, great. Alright, file EBCD, emergency closings. We're just, um, replacing the one we just retired with the MSAC model policy.
I'll just say one question on that one. In the prior version, we speak to how we will communicate it to families. Would that be important to have in the policies that they know how to, they'll expect to hear? Or do we intentionally be quiet about that because it could change depending on the platform?
Yeah, so, um, I think that's actually, that's a good question, I guess for, just to keep in mind for all of our policies. I'm finding that the, the, the policy subcommittee wants to keep our policies as general as possible so that we can have procedures that we are more specific on. So you're going to see where we would do, where we would post this stuff on our website.
Great, okay.
Okay, so I, I mean, the only other thing I guess is, does it say it in here that we would post it on the website?
No.
The last version was very, the last version I think went too far because it said by what time you would tell people. I don't think that's helpful, but the method I think potentially is valuable, so as long as we're addressing it, that's fine, thank you.
Yeah, to Craig's point, the, the message that we've been sending to the administration is that, you know, there's the what, which is this? And then they, they deal with the how, so. Awesome, thanks. Let's see here, uh, file ECAD, debt loss or vandalized books, materials, equipment. The subcommittee is recommending to adopt the policy with minor revisions. Any questions on this? Okay, great. File EEA, student transportation services, the subcommittee is recommending to replace the existing policy with the model policy. Any questions on this one? Okay. Uh, next one, file EEAE, school bus safety program, subcommittee is recommending to replace the existing policy with the model policy.
Michael, my only question on that one was there didn't appear to be any language in there or regarding drivers that we as a district hire, it was all through the contractor. And I just wasn't sure if that wasn't contemplated and if that was something we wanted to add.
That's actually, it was not discussed.
Okay. I, I'm comfortable adopting the model with maybe consideration that we think about that. There's also a policy that I didn't see here around drug and alcohol testing for school bus and commercial vehicles, which I feel like would now be applicable, given we have some on the payroll, so I didn't know if we wanted.
Let's, let's, so the EEAE, so we want to add, or you're suggesting?
It didn't read to me like it would also apply to drivers that the district is hiring.
Okay.
Unless you feel differently.
It's kind of, it's quiet on either, so I'm not sure why, why it wouldn't.
Well, it's a four.
EEAE, right?
Yeah, I read EEAE as well.
EEAE, school bus safety program, it's just.
No, sorry, I was reading, sorry.
There's a lot of Es.
Oh, sorry, maybe I, maybe I just said EEA, sorry. I'm sorry. I'm sorry, I got excited with the Es.
E, I know, so many Es. So let's do EEAE, school bus safety program.
Thank you.
There, there's four bullet marks.
Sorry, okay, yeah, no, I retract my comment on that one.
That's fine, okay.
Okay.
That's why I was, I was like.
Yep, sorry.
Okay. Yeah, so we're just, we're recommending to replace existing with a, a, an MSAC model. So any questions on EEAE? No, okay, great. So EEAE, EA.
Yes.
Um, bus driver exam and training.
Thank you. So I'd like to go. It just talked about those employed by the bus contractor, so I didn't know if we'd want to extend that to persons employed by Milford, the town of Milford, Milford Public Schools.
Bus contractor to drive, oh yeah, you're right.
Are those contractor, contracted employees? I'm just trying to save us some.
Person employed by the bus contractor, I mean, it's very clear she's right.
I just wanted to flag it.
Okay, why don't we, um.
So you could do it too, yeah, you could either put an and or you could get rid of that.
Is that something that you guys could just easily update and we can bring back and take care of next week?
Yeah, we, we can do it now too. I mean, if it's to be that simple.
By the bus, by the contractor, and or Milford Public Schools.
Could you just say persons employed to drive school transportation vehicles and just be silent on?
I don't know that you want to be silent on the, um, I think you want to be specific about the bus contractor.
Okay.
I agree.
Or you say employed, or it's, or, or you say, um, approve or disapprove persons employed to drive school transportation vehicles, including the bus contractor, or something like that. Including any bus contractor, because it's not the bus contractor, we have numerous transportation contracts.
Why don't we take it back then? Since it's multiple, yeah.
Sorry.
Oh, that's fine, that's good.
That's fine, we'll, we'll keep that one.
I'm not sure why the model policy says.
We'll keep that one out of the, out of the vote for now and just to give time to.
We'll pass on that one.
To document that one quick.
Michael, just to go with that, there's an EEAEA, not even kidding, bus driver examination and training. I didn't know if that's something we'd also want to consider adding?
Let's, let's get through this.
Isn't that the one we're talking about right now?
Oh, sorry.
Yeah.
I'm sorry, sorry, oh my gosh, sorry.
It's not easy to follow along with these.
No, we're good, sorry. My list was condensed, yeah, I'm with you now. It was E, okay.
If it's in addition, why don't we get through the list?
Okay, that's fine, yep, perfect, that works.
Yeah.
Yep.
Alright, we're going to move on to EEAEC, student conduct on school buses. Um, the committee is recommending to replace the file EEAEA dash two with the MSAC model policy.
Excellent.
Any questions on there?
Is there any concern with buses versus vans? Like just make it more generic, just like any student transportation?
Direct transportation to a.
A van, a bus.
I was going to say, my only interpretation on that would be that the vans, the vans have to follow the same rules as buses on the road when it comes to public safety, so I would imagine this would apply to any of the labeled bus.
Yeah.
School vehicles?
That would be the only change I would need.
My concern about that is that would then apply to facilities, equipment too. There's no students on those, so, I mean, in terms of student transportation. If there's a word bus on top of it, that counts.
I think.
Just given my opinion on that.
We keep it as is, but I think it's a good question, Brendan.
Let's leave it as is and we can.
We can always modify it.
Dig into that a little bit more.
Yeah, I mean, is a van a bus, or is any transportation with students considered a bus?
Well, we can define it that way. For the purpose of this policy, a bus is, blah, 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 blah.
Exactly, yeah, let's just leave it as is and.
Okay.
We can go back to it.
Alright.
Creepy, then, I mean, good. I love your answer.
Bus, okay. Good questions. So EFBA, school food and nutrition meal modifications. The subcommittee is recommending we adopt an updated version of this policy, the MASE model policy to replace the meal modifications policy that MPS is coded as ACF dash two, 2023. Carla is on board with this. Any questions on this one? No, okay.
No.
Alright, let's move through. So EFC, universal free school meals. The subcommittee is recommending the adoption as new policy following guidance from the MSAC and Carl Tunnel Food Service Director. Any questions on this one? Anybody?
No. You can just press, just a quick, just a quick comment, yeah, on it. I know, and this is not going to be a change to the policy, I don't think, but, or maybe in the future can, so. One, two, three, fourth paragraph down on that, students seeking additional meals or alacott items will be charged accordingly for those additional meals. My only question on that is, and I know that is our standard policy and it's kind of a policy across a lot of Massachusetts schools, that every student gets the one meal. But everybody has, in a sense, I'd say, different eating habits or, or quantity of food. So my only thought to that is, do we need to look at it just from any standpoint of, you know, if it's, if it, they're serving pizza and, and they serve, everybody gets one slice, but a kid asks for two? And, and, so in our policy, it's everybody gets one. You know, and, and if they follow the, the rules to the letter, then everybody gets one slice of pizza, right? So just something that we may need to consider and, and how we could, you know, assist in that without get it being abused. And I don't have the answers yet, but just from reading the policy, and I think that's something definitely we need, we can talk to Carla further on and, and go from there. But again, not looking to change it now, but just wanted to bring it to our attention globally.
It's a, it's a reimbursement, right? So you get, you get the one meal and we get reimbursed for that. And then anything over that, it's going to be the responsibility of the student, otherwise we're on the hook for it.
Right.
Completely.
They're counting the meals, so it has to be the same meals.
Mm-hmm, right.
It's reimbursable based. But I, I want to point out, some of the students can work it out, they can trade.
Right, yeah.
Salad with pizza.
We're talking about it, I'm sure. So, and again, yeah.
When, were you one of those students?
My son.
So as you hear, there's a lot of, lot of governance to this.
That's funny.
How, how could we assist students that may just want that extra slice of pizza because they're just that much hungrier, bigger appetite, you know, that's all, so, again. More food for thought.
Alright, that's no more discussion of that. Alright, excellent joke, alright. Are there any other comments or questions about any of the policies that we have discussed? No?
Okay, so I, I'm going to take these into three chunks.
No, we'll go through each one.
Want to go through each one individually?
Yep, I'll just ask for a motion.
Fire away.
That's fine.
I'll keep track.
Yep, um, alright, file EB, safety program, do I have a motion to accept as presented?
So moved.
Second. All in favor?
You're the one who said you're going to go through it.
Alright, I'll do it. Alright, unanimous passes, so you got it, Melissa?
Yeah.
File EBAB, pest management, do I have a motion to approve as presented?
I'll motion.
Motion by Brendan, second by Meg, all in favor? Unanimous. File EBCD, emergency closings, do I have a motion to accept as presented? Derek, motion by Derek, second by Meg, all in favor? Unanimous. Good, Melissa? Uh, ECAD, debt loss or vandalized book, vandalized books, materials, equipment, do I have a motion to accept as presented?
Motion by Chris.
Second by Megan.
All in favor? Unanimous. File EEA, student transportation service, do I have a motion to accept as presented?
Motion by Brendan.
Second by Chris.
All in favor? Unanimous. EEAE, school bus safety program, do I have a motion to accept it as presented? Right, motion by Derek. Second by.
Another one?
I'll take.
Second. All in favor? Motion is unanimous. File EEAEA, bus, bus driver exam and training.
Passing that one, right?
Nope, next one.
This one.
I thought the next one was passing. Oh no, you're right, sorry. Oh, thanks Brendan. File EEAEC, student conduct in school buses. Do you have a motion to accept it as presented? Motion by Meg, second by Derek, all in favor? Unanimous. File EFBA, school food and nutrition meal modifications, do I have a motion to accept it as presented?
Motion by Chris.
Second by Brendan.
All in favor? Unanimous. File EFC, universal free school meals, do I have a motion to accept it as presented? Motion by Meg. Second by Chris. All in favor? It's unanimous.
May I ask about two other policies?
Yeah.
We have current policy EEAA, which I think is important. It addresses walkers and riders and who will get a ride. Where, it's one, see, are we maintaining that policy?
Brendan, there's some questions on it.
Great, no worries, but it's for, for discussion, super helpful, thank you.
We had a mini discussion on.
Just wanted to ask, that's wonderful. And then EEAEB, drug and alcohol testing for school bus and commercial vehicle drivers. I would just question whether or not that would be more relevant to the district where we're employing more people, so.
Is this a new one?
Uh, it's not one that we currently have, but it's an MASE model, EEAEB. If you could just confirm whether or not we should have it. Sorry, thanks, okay, that's all.
And, and I, I guess I, to be clear about all these E policies, none of them are pressing. But we just took the section all, all together and tried to bang through them to at least review them all.
I'm only sensitive to the driver ones, Craig, we seem to have a growing population of people that are under our purview, that we have the right protocols in place, that's all.
Thank you.
Thanks, yep.
I will say, uh, thank you to the facility, uh, facility, sorry. Policy subcommittee, that's a lot of work in just a couple swings. Thank you for that, I'm sure there's going to be quite a few more of these to come, so.
Michael, lift the charge.
Nicely done.
Appreciate it.
Thanks, Melissa did all the work, so, um, I think someone take credit for this.
Someone did, alright.
Melissa's taking credit. And just to, to, I know our policy, policy on, we're supposed to talk through them first and then we vote through them. Hence why I did that process, so.
Excellent.
Alright, with that, we can stop saying policy and we'll move on to new superintendent induction program overview.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Thanks for sitting through all that.
No problem, I've been there.
I'm expecting a report after.
So thank you very much for allowing me to come tonight and introduce myself and talk a little bit about the new superintendent induction program. We call it NISIP. And NISIP really encourages us to make sure that we come before the school committee, to make sure that you understand what the program does and how we do it and what to expect from outcomes from superintendent consigliere. So the new superintendent induction program is a statewide program and every new superintendent has the opportunity to participate. And that requires your agreement to allow your superintendent to participate. So first and foremost, thank you for supporting Craig in, in this work. This is the sixteenth year of the program and it's really a unique program to Massachusetts. Not very many states have an induction program for superintendents. I was in the third cohort and so now we are in the sixteenth cohort, which is kind of amazing that, you know, it's still going strong. And the program is adapting for the needs of superintendents as, as time goes on and, and the needs in our schools and in all of our communities. So how that program works is that retired superintendents apply to become coaches. I am a coach and I'm also a content facilitator. So I am one of the two facilitators of the program for first year superintendents. And then I also coach five superintendents. Three in their first year and two in their second year. So the program is set up, first I'll tell you a little bit about the funding and I'll tell you about how the program operates. But I also want to give you a little bit of information about me as well. So the program is funded from three sources. The Department of Education, the Association of School Superintendents and the Bar Foundation. And so these three sources, each of them fund different parts of the program. One is training for the coaches, one is one-on-one coaching from the coach to the superintendent and the third are the. and the third are the content days where there's actual curriculum and training that takes place. In between those training days, there's usually one training day each month through the school year. And in between those sessions, as well as through the summer months, coaches meet with their superintendents. In the first year, we can meet with the superintendents up to six hours a month. And what that looks like is sometimes one-on-one meetings. So Craig and I will come together and talk about what's going on, or we will follow up on the content from the training days and what we're asking our superintendents to do, and I'll be providing support to Craig along the way. In the second year, then that time goes down to four hours a month. And in the third year, they don't have an individual coach, but they are part of a consultancy group, where once a month, their consultancy group comes together, and they do what we call problems of practice. So each superintendent can bring a problem of practice, they go through a protocol, and their colleagues, along with coach facilitators, help them work through those problems. So that's the basic structure of it. In terms of how do coaches get matched up with superintendents? Some of it is what types of districts you've worked in, what your expertise might be, sizes of districts, and some of it is how close are you in proximity to be able to get to those different districts. A little bit about me. So, I was a superintendent for 11 years in Lincoln, Massachusetts. Lincoln, Massachusetts is an interesting district. So you have the small town of Lincoln, it's a pre-K to eight district, and then the kids go to the regional high school of Lincoln Sudbury. But we also operate the schools at Hanscom Air Force Base. And so, we, in addition to the schools in Lincoln, we had a contract with the Department of Defense. They've had it for over 60 years. And we also had a pre-K to eight district on the Hanscom Air Force Base. So it's an interesting district to come from, a wide, diverse population of students and families, and was a participant in the Metco program, where students from Boston come out to Lincoln. And so, an interesting place to be. My background, I actually grew up in inner-city Los Angeles. And I moved to Massachusetts in my 30s to get my doctorate at Boston University. In California, I grew up in pretty poor areas, and the schools were really the place that supported me as a child. And when, in order to get through college, I worked as a paraprofessional in the district where I grew up. There was a late August need for a science teacher, right when I had finished my degree in biology, and suddenly I became a middle school science teacher. And from there, went on to be an assistant superintendent, a science coordinator, and then a superintendent. So in Massachusetts, I came to BU, got my doctorate, taught for a couple of years at Endicott College in Beverly, and then needed to get back into school districts. So I worked in the Wellesley Public Schools for 12 years. And then, two different positions, a K-5 science coordinator, and then, six years as the assistant superintendent for teaching and learning. And then went to Lincoln for 11 years. So, I have a, I like to say that because sometimes if I just say, I've worked in Wellesley and I've worked in Lincoln, you're like, what does, is this a match? But I have a lot of varied experiences beyond that, and so that's why I share all of that. So, in terms of the program, in the first year, what we are focused on with superintendents is asking them to go through a very comprehensive entry plan process. And even though Craig has been in the district for many, many years, he is now in a new role. And so, when our superintendents have been in the district for a long time, we feel sometimes it's as important and even more important to take a step back and really dig in and learn about the district from a different angle, from a different perspective. What I've talked to Craig about is, you have assumptions about what the needs are based on all of your experience. And so your entry process is, a part of that will be to go through a process of talking to people, looking at data, reviewing all of your documents, your policies and so forth, and checking your assumptions. We ask our superintendents, you know, I'm going to say, sometimes school committees are like, hey, let's go, we got things to do, and you want to push them to go quickly. But we ask our superintendents to go slow to go fast. And so in their first year in the job, we really want them to spend a good amount of time meeting with people, interviewing folks, using survey, using observation, going into classrooms and so forth, to make sure that they have a good, strong understanding of the strengths of the district, the needs of the district, and what the challenges are. By around February, we'll be asking the superintendents to take what they've learned in their entry process and create a report of entry findings, which they will present to you. And from that report of entry findings, then in the spring and through the summer, they develop what we call a strategy for district improvement. And I just want to make sure that I say this so that it's clear. A strategy for district improvement is not a strategic plan, okay? We see these as two different things. The work in NISIP, we are really focused on what we call the instructional core. Outcomes for students, and what happens for students in classrooms and in the schools, the content that is used, and the instructional practices that take place, and then the systems that are put in place in the district. What Craig creates as a strategy for district improvement will not look like a strategic plan. Those tend to be a lot more work and more focused on the operational sides of things. He may have some goals that come out of his entry finding that are operational, and that's okay. But we just want to be clear that if the expectation from you is, you know, we want a five-year strategic plan, we really ask our superintendents to focus on, what do we need for the instructional core to move students forward in the district? And that will set you up for the next year. And those goals that you have and the priorities that you have may stay in place for many, many years, but what you do for your action steps for it might change a little bit along the way, okay? What I was going, oh, one other thing I wanted to say. So we meet one-on-one, but I will also come and be present during his meetings with his leadership team. When there are walkthroughs in classrooms, learning walks, I will attend some of those with them. And my whole intent is about support. To support Craig so that he can support all of the employees in the district, and then that supports students along the way. And so, you may see me back at another school committee meeting, I'll be around in the schools. But the intent, again, is completely support, and it is not evaluated. And so, making sure that all of the administrators, faculty know that when we are in these spaces and watching and learning, it is for that intent, to learn about the district and not to evaluate anybody. So, open it up to any questions you might have.
I think you started by saying you, you know, retired. Clearly, you just have a new job, right? Talk about how much you're doing.
Yeah.
I'm just curious, in terms of the action planning.
Yeah.
When you talk about those types of goals, those seem to me to be things that would take a long time to implement. What should we expect in terms of like, what that will look like?
You know, it really depends on what those findings are. But usually, you know, there's, I'll just say, there, in general, there are a lot of districts right now who have a huge focus on literacy, right? And so, you probably would expect that there's going to be a goal, I think there already is, on literacy. And then there are often, right now, you're seeing a big emphasis on belonging, student belonging. And how do we ensure that all students have a sense of belonging in their schools and have the supports that they need in order to be successful in the schools? So it really is going to depend on what Craig learns, and, you know, what bubbles up as those priorities. Yeah, and in terms of my retirement, so I've been retired for two full years, but yeah. The moment I retired, I started in NISIP. So, yeah, it's been a little tricky.
Good for you. Maybe one more just question, and maybe the answer is no. As you think about all the superintendents that you've worked with, do they tend to be themes in terms of challenges in the first couple of years? Or is it really dependent on the needs of the district and the challenges of the district?
You know, I think there are certain things that there tend to be themes. And right now, again, the literacy and the sense of belonging. And how do we serve all students in terms of equity? I think those are probably the main themes. But then you certainly have uniqueness in different districts, and it just depends on where you are. And it depends on, you know, have you been in the district before or not? And do you have things that you have to clean up or not? And so, it's going to vary a lot, yeah.
Thank you.
And so we'll just, you know, when we work with all of our superintendents on those content days, we have them bring some of the data that they've collected along the way so that they can start to talk about it with their colleagues and think about, what are the themes? And what's rising to the top? And what additional information do we need to find to triangulate that? To make sure that we're really honing in on the true priorities of the district.
Excellent, well, thank you for your support, Craig, and for being here, for supporting us.
Absolutely, my pleasure, thank you.
Thanks, Matt.
Anyone else?
Thank you very much, you mean, appreciate it, obviously. Craig's under good hands, is in good hands.
I appreciate that.
And I appreciate, yeah, I know part of his, his goals for this committee are, of course, work, going out and checking the stakeholders and surveying and all that. And I know that's part of what you want too. So I see how those two are going to fall hand in hand. Although, obviously, like yours is in a sense a little different. So again, yeah, those themes of the stakeholders, the survey, the data, getting the themes and meeting with department heads, yeah. Like, to hear you say that and to know that that message, you know, comes back to Craig is the importance of kind of the ground floor and directionality of where his job will go is great to hear. So, no real great questions for you, because I appreciate that input, so, I just wanted to make mention to that.
And I want to make sure to be clear, you know, that's not to say that, you know, you've got an MSBA project, right? You've got, I had the same when I first started as a superintendent. There was, we were at, they were at the end of an MSBA project when I started in July and going to the final vote. And Lincoln has more architects per capita than Massachusetts. And in the 11th hour, they didn't like the design. And it failed. And I spent the next 10 years getting those projects done. We got them done, though. But, but, so, just a word of caution on that. But, but, but not with MSBA money, they didn't get back in.
Oh, my gosh.
Yeah, 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 so.
Yeah.
All good, thank you.
All good? Anyone else?
Thank you so much.
Thank you, that was great.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, report of the superintendent of schools.
Thank you, sir, I just, I want to thank Becky. Becky's been critical in the first few weeks here. Just be, we meet basically three out of four weeks a month, for a couple hours a month. And I just, just to be able to talk through what's going on in the moment, but what's going on, what's been going on, and then what I'm about to do in the next week has been, it's just been great to have somebody to talk it through with, somebody that's been there before. But then I think the other component of the program is meeting with the other new superintendents, with the experienced superintendents in the room, and just listening to what, she's right, everyone's talking about all the same sort of priorities in their district. So, that's, it's just been great, been a great experience so far. Thank you, Becky, for that. So, what you have in front of you all is, it's my entry plan. It's broken into basically four phases. I know that Becky kind of went through each of the phases. I'll go in a little bit more detail, but, but basically, phase one, we're in phase one right now. And part of, phase one is all about collecting the data. And I highlight here all the different ways that I'm going to collect data. I meet on a regular basis, and regular basis being at least bi-weekly with all the folks that I'm evaluating. So that's all the principals, it's directors, central office folks. And we talk about, we talk about all the, what are our strengths, what are our areas of need? What are we missing right now? So those are the conversations that we're always having. I have, I think, six notebooks at this point. Not full, but it depends on who I'm meeting with, the notebook that I pick up. So, I'm trying to stay organized with this data collection, but I also have some digital files too. So, when I meet with the folks that I'm evaluating, I have digital notes that I take when I meet with them. But things that I'm planning to do, I plan on interviewing all of you, so spoiler alert, at some point, we're going to sit down for an hour. And we're going to talk about what you believe the strengths of our district are, what you think we need to work on, and where you think there are blind spots or areas that we're just completely missing the mark. So, we'll schedule those soon. I also hope to get a representative sample of all the different roles in our district. I think one of the, teachers are, I think, yes, I want to get a hold of teachers and talk to teachers. But I also think that, and I don't even know if I put it on here, to be honest with you, but I've been thinking about this a lot. Our assistant principals have a lot to say, and they're underutilized, undervalued. I'm not sure what the right word to say is, but they have a lot of experiences that I think need to be talked through. So that's also a group that I'm hoping to talk to every one of them, as I would talk to you all. Because I really do value what they, what they break to the table. I do want to talk with a lot of different parents and guardians, in all, you know, in all different kinds of venues. So, in the schools, maybe in churches, maybe at the senior center, maybe like different locations in the, in the community. I've already started talking to students. This past week, I've spoken with three students, I believe. And just talking them through what their goals and what they're trying to accomplish when they get through, through school. So that's, that's, not to say that interviewing all of you won't be the fun and invigorating experience, but talking with the kids is awesome, and just listening to what they have to say. Probably only second to talking to all of you folks. I've already met with some of our community members at Town Hall. I will continue to meet with others. This past week, for example, I didn't interview them, but Police Chief and I had probably three or four different conversations this week. But we talk on a pretty regular basis. But other community leaders and elected officials, I think, are going to be important to see where they, where they think the school's strengths are and where we need to do some work. Let's see. I give you a list of questions here, I talked through what some of those questions were. I also want to hold office hours beyond just like an interview, more of like an unstructured time. Think of it like coffee time, where, I'll say it again, the senior center, I spent some time down at the senior center when we were building Woodland. I love those conversations too, and just reminiscing with people, but then also explaining to people like why we would need a new Milford High School, for example. It's important, because not every, everyone in the community gets to go through Milford High School and hasn't seen it maybe in several years. So, just to kind of talk through why, why we might need a new Milford High School would be important. Now, let's see, so, phase two of the data collection will be just reviewing different artifacts. These are different reports that we've had done in our district. I'm at the bottom of page two. They also fed into our district strategic plan in 2024. But just reviewing. But just reviewing those documents, there's a lot of, of good information, recommendations, um, strengths, areas of growth, all within those documents and trying to, um, capture those and bring those up, uh, again, I think will be important. Then we're just reviewing student data, enrollment data, achievement data, attendance data. Attendance data, by the way, just an aside, our half a day yesterday, um, while it was double what it has been. So we got, we're missing around four hundred students. On any given day, we're, we're somewhere between two hundred and three hundred. But in half a days in the past, we were over a thousand. So remember, we tried, we, we said we were gonna try this half a day on a Wednesday and see what we got for results. So pretty good results, um, better than the past. So we cut it probably half of where we were in the past. So that was good. But of course, I don't know that every family in our district actually knew it was a half a day. Some of them were kinda surprised when we sent the kids home early, but that's okay.
Maybe one of them is me. Oh, she's home.
Works on that calendar.
Yeah, I don't know that we should just spring it on people, but our attendance is better than it has been. But anyway, so an aside, but that's the kinda data we'll be looking at, right? It's like what, what days of the week are, 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 we have, um, a lot of absences. The past half days have historically been our worst days for attendance. So looking at, at data like that. And then doing some surveys, focus groups, interviews, reviewing all of that. All right, so then phase three will be somewhere in the spring. I put April, might be May, uh, March. But then I'll begin sharing the results of the work, uh, not only with you folks, but, um, with the community as well. Because I think if, if I'm gonna hold forums and talk to people about the, the community center, then they deserve to hear a follow-up of what I found, um, through my, I'm gonna call it the world tour of Milford. So I think that'll be important is just not only sharing it here, but trying to figure out different ways to share it, um, throughout the town. And then, um, uh, like Becky said, doing some action planning and not developing a, a full strategic plan or a full new strategic plan, but developing strategies for district improvement focused on, um, curriculum instruction assessment. That'll be, you know, spring into summer. And I could see us as a, a leadership team kinda talking through that and talking through the priorities. And then kicking off the new school year with, um, the opening day with all the staff saying, all right, I did this world tour of Milford last year, here's what I found and here's what we're gonna do to, um, attack what we found. This year, we kicked it off with our, our three priorities. Seems like all the districts around are doing the same district priorities, but, um, that's what I hope to do with this. And then, um, it'll hopefully be a foundation for a new district strategic plan, um, not for next year, but the year after. So that's my entry plan is, I guess, a thirty thousand foot view, maybe twenty thousand.
Comments or questions on everything except for the half-day comment?
I just note, Matt, obviously Craig, so much sort of work and thought has already gone into this, so thank you for that. I really look forward to seeing what this sort of generates. My only question is whether we've given consideration to leveraging existing forums, town meetings, PTO meetings to address people where they already are as part of your meeting with people. It's just something to consider.
Yeah, um.
I don't even need an answer. It's just sometimes it's hard to get people to show up for something else, so I just want to offer it.
It's a good point. So leveraging those and getting on an agenda.
That's all.
Yep.
Or being available a half an hour before town meeting and posting it and saying you'll be there to talk to people or just as one example, but just.
Good idea.
PTO meetings, whatever.
All right. Thank you.
Thank you.
Nothing else there. So we'll go to the report of the interim assistant superintendent for teaching and learning.
Hi, everyone. Um, I'm gonna give you a really big picture view of kind of where we are professional development wise. I'm gonna break it into kinda two different parts. One is we have contractual hours. We have the two contractual hours. Majority of the schools, those are on Tuesdays. At Brookside, we moved it to Wednesday this year. Um, and kinda talk a little bit about what we do at those hours and then also talk about the five half-days that we have because we had one yesterday and we did some professional development, um, in there. So for the most part, those two contractual hours, um, during the months are happening at the principal level. And so the principals are really the ones that are coordinating the content of those sessions. They're doing it in collaboration with the district-wide directors and the CTLs. This year in general, it, it, the theme seems to be literacy at the K eight level. K five is really, again, dedicating most of those hours to our rollout of exponential learning. Grade six, eight is really focusing on year two of Amplify curriculum. So we're seeing that as the major theme across the board at our K eight level. I would say about half of the meetings, um, that aren't focused on the exponential learning or Amplify or there are teachers that are not involved in those, um, new curriculum rollouts at the literacy level, is really focused on department time. The majority of that is facilitated by our CTLs. Um, and they're really mostly focused on horizontal and vertical alignment at their building level. And so thinking about a specific grade level, like are all the teachers that are teaching, you know, social studies at that grade level aligned to what they're teaching and why they're teaching it? And then also if we pick on Stacy, like is six, eight vertically aligned in terms of what is happening in that particular department? That work is really facilitated by the curriculum team leaders or the CTLs with some oversight from the district-wide directors and the building-based administration. The other half of the meetings, um, so one month, one time a month is, is those department times. One time a month is more full faculty meetings. Um, and at those full faculty meetings, there's different trainings, there's different discussions. It's typically led by somebody from the administrative team. We've done things like co-teaching professional development. We've gone over the evaluation in those types of settings. So there are more kind of information getting or trainings that the entire faculty need to be receiving on those, um, contractual hours. If we think more about the five half-days, we have a lot more time in front of teachers, right? And so an hour, once you get started and then you have to end on time, you're really talking, you know, not a full hour of content. When we're talking half-days, we're talking being able to work with staff for three, three and a half hour chunks. So we're able to get a lot more, um, intentional professional development done in those half-hours. So if we just look at yesterday and what happened across our district yesterday, Shining Star actually has the privilege of having a full day professional development when we're in a half-day. So they did a lot. They, um, focused on each of the goals that they're set. And so they spent a chunk of time kinda diving into each of those goals. They did receive their Alice training from our SROs. They also worked with our SEL director around education stability training. So they got a bunch of different topics in that full day professional development. All of our K five exponential learning teachers were provided with three hours of grade level time. And we brought Brookside and Memorial together. So our kindergarten teachers were all in the same room together, which was a really powerful piece. Um, and what they were doing is they were unpacking the unit, um, that they were working on and some upcoming lessons. We brought in an exponential learning facilitator to run that because Carol couldn't be in five grade levels at a time. And the feedback that I heard, um, was that it was one of the better PDs and they are so thrilled that they were able to, to really dive in and get this, um, protocol in place. The teachers at the K five level that were not involved in exponential learning, um, were really unpacking their different grade level content. So we know that the fourth and fifth grade teachers at math worked on the unit and the assessment that they're working on currently. The humanities teachers at fifth grade worked together, the science teachers at fifth grade worked together. And so they did some more department work, um, again, led by the curriculum team leaders. Stacy Middle School also had three hours of department time, again, led by the CTLs. Things on agendas were anything where from Open Said and the pacing of Open Said, um, lesson internalization for math, alignment with Amplify for ELA, some progress monitoring in the EL department. And the world language department talked about some end goals, um, that they had for the school year. At Milford High School, they also had department time. A lot of those agendas looked like they were focusing on, um, we are having some vertical discussions happening this year between Stacy and the high school and the different departments. So some of the departments were starting to have conversations around what needed to be covered in those, um, vertical discussions with their Stacy colleagues. They were talking about course alignments. They were talking about the three key district priorities and how they were gonna be using, you know, how they were going to be doing literacy, collective advocacy and Milford pride as a department group. And then they were really also just talking about like what are their priorities and what do they wanna accomplish as a group, as a department this school year. Across our district, our special education teachers, TAs and BAs were engaging in some crisis prevention and intervention recertification training. And so we were able to use that chunk of time to get them that because we needed that chunk of time to get them the recertification. We also had Dr. Sharaki Holly here. Um, he worked with fifty of our educators around culturally and linguistically responsive teaching and learning. And he really kinda kicked off the work that we're gonna be doing with that second cadre, um, across our district this year. Really thinking about how are they building their mindset and their skillset to, to, to do some of the validating, affirming, building and bridging work with the different cultures that we have in our classrooms? And, and how are they going to engage in some binder studies where they're gonna learn different activities? And then they'll have a chance to go and try those activities in their classrooms with feedback and debrief. And that cycle will happen, um, through the beginning of January is kind of our end date of that cadre work. And yesterday was the kickoff. So you can see that there's like a bunch of different, um, topics happening. We really depend on our district-wide directors to collaborate with our CTLs and our CTLs to be facilitating this work, um, when it is done at the department level. Our building administrators are kinda going through the building and popping into different departments or leading sessions depending on what is happening in their building at that time. I know at the K five level, each administrator sat with a different grade level and then they were able to all kind of like be like, okay, this is what second grade did, this is what first grade did, this is what kindergarten did to kinda keep each other in the loop instead of having to kind of pop around as we go. So that's really the focus this year, um, in terms of professional development.
Questions?
Quick comment. Thank you very much. You know, I'm the one that asked to put this on and it just shows kinda how much is going on, on, on one of those, just a, a half PD day. And I think a lot of just community members like, well, why do our children get a half-day? Well, I think you just, you know, you took everything and kinda made it a three-minute presentation, but what happened over a three and a half hour period and it just showed like each school, each department, depending on grade level, depending on subject matter, everybody has a different focus. And I think that's the message that I got and which is good and what I hope the message that was delivered out to, to anybody listening or even when someone asks us what's going on, you know, again, why we have five professional development days. And then again, the two hours per month also. So, no, thank you very much. No specific questions. I appreciate that knowledge. And again, that way I can answer questions better to anybody out there that asks me why.
All right. Thank you.
Thank you.
We'll move on to the report of the school business administrator.
Okay, so, um, we're going to look at the FY twenty-six budget update. It's, um, um, summary of the snapshot of, uh, September fifteenth budget. And, um, it's, uh, we're in quarter one, so everything looks okay. And I, I think whatever you see negative, um, is not really a concern. It's just the, the ten, due to turnovers, um, and, um, how we budget it. For example, um, I budgeted the substitute, um, whether it's long-term or short-term, we, I budgeted it in one line, but, uh, we reported in different lines. So if you combine those together, it's still not a concern. And Brendan asked, uh, in previous meeting about the heating of buildings. It's because we, we, we had a budget, uh, reduction due to an offset from the food service account. So if we put back the one hundred and twenty, then it won't be negative anymore. And same thing as tuition, we see a negative now, but we do have an offset, which you can see in the bottom. All the offsets are listed there. So overall, the balance is now eleven million in quarter one. Thank you.
Any questions on that one? Okay.
Okay. Next document is, um, a proposed, um, budget guidelines for FY twenty-seven. It's an upgrade from last year's. Um, I already, I also attached the last year's as a reference. So it's just, um, um, I listed the budget deliverables, um, separate from the guidelines. And I kind of spell out, um, what requests need to be reported, um, under each category. What's level services, what's strategic plan and what's other critical needs? Yes?
Question. Thank you for bringing this forward from last year. I know last year we did it kind of rushed, but we wanted to create the, the habit. So this is awesome.
Of course.
My question is, and sorry I couldn't come to the last subcommittee. This is great. This is what I personally expect. So when you and Craig go to the district and say, hey, you know, level service is pretty explanatory, right? You say new initiatives, is there gonna be a number that you say, all right, you know, do a level of service, but don't go over four percent increase? So are you gonna give guidance on, on that and will that be in this document?
We have a different document for the admins and there's guidelines, three percent guidelines in there.
So, 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 um, it, it's what?
Three percent.
Three percent for new initiatives or level service?
For, in total.
Oh, in total.
New initiatives, we didn't have any, any guidelines on new initiatives, right? They come to the table with anything that they, they want, then we kinda talk it through. And then we bring it all to you, right, on new initiatives.
It's suggested, uh, but it's, we, yeah, we look at initiatives separately.
Yeah.
So this idea basically came honestly from when, like a year, year and a half ago? The document, um, an example you gave me actually showed a town had a, a number. I'm like, well, that's a really good idea, even though we don't have our final of the state. It still gives some barriers or guidelines to, to the district to say, hey, you know what? Do some, level service and do, you know, new initiatives, but don't go over five percent or six, whatever the number is. So when we do get the final numbers from the state, we're not making big swings. We're making smaller shifts to, to, if we get more or less. Does that make sense?
It does make sense. Yes. I think the guideline I gave to the principals and then we talked to them too, is if you ask for new initiatives, you need to trade in something, right? But it depends on what their really needs are. So, and we don't, we don't have a, when do we have a town guideline? Not until the, the end of the budget system.
It's like May, yeah.
So I cannot really give them.
Yeah. I guess. But we can give them a, we can give, we can give them an idea though, to say, shoot, right?
My only concern is this, right? Doing this a number of years. If we wanna change directions, it's fine, but, but the message that we've always given to the principals is tell us what you need, right? And so if you tell them, tell us what you need up to three percent, which is not exactly telling us like the full scope of, of what they believe they need, um, to run their school. So I'm, I guess I'm okay.
Unless you're concerned about the principals, I'm more concerned about the district if that makes sense, right?
Well, the, the principals are really the, the ones that come with the new initiatives. You know, I'm trying to think of like district initiatives.
I mean, like the, the whole package, right?
Yeah.
And it's just an idea. I just, you know, this is great. I like to have a number, like as a target. So like again, when you go to the, the whole district and say, hey, we're creating a budget and, you know, here's our goals all here. You know, if I'm a principal and I say, you know, I want all these new things and it comes to like a twelve percent increase and you're like, okay, great. And then you come back, you know, like how, how, how does that, how do you reconcile that before it comes to us?
Well, you.
There was a lot of meetings before we came to.
We meet a lot and say, well, we think this is a priority. We think this is a priority. We agree this is a priority, but it's not gonna fit into any kind of a budget that we're gonna be able to present.
So it sounds like you focus on like the operational tactical piece, whittle it down. And then you, you bring in the finance, say, financial piece after kinda figure out the needs. Say, all right, well, you know, four percent increase i- is what the town's gonna give us. Take our needs and then dig in further. Is that kind of?
I think in the first stage, when we meet with the principals and admins, uh, we just wanna have all the ideas in one place, right? Same concept with the capital plan. We wanna see those things, whether we approve it. Same concept with the capital plan. We want to see those things, whether we approve it this year or not, is on our table to discuss. So, and the second stage, when, when the, when all of us meet at the central office, we kind of like Root down to what's the district priorities are. So we can give them a guideline, but I don't think it's something that we force them or to follow.
Yeah, no, I'm just kind of trying to understand the process. I don't disagree that you'd want them to hide anything that they need.
Correct.
And if you give them a number, they may hide something that they need and realize, oh, you know what, they really need that, but I didn't know about it, because we gave them 3%, you know, goal, right?
And I guess through the process, that's where you see where a principal might put something as a priority number Three or four on their list, but we end up moving it to like a priority one, because we're looking at it from the global perspective of the district.
Alright, thank you. I just wanted a better understanding.
Yeah, good question.
Yeah.
And then the budget guidelines, basically it's similar to last year's and we got some feedback from the budget subcommittee. And we added that we will reexamine the contract and operations, which we are all doing it every day. Especially when the contracts are up to renewal. We're going to look at the potential savings. And then last year's priorities on new initiatives are on foc- focusing on literacy and high-quality instructional materials. And this year, we're gonna just focus on the three district priorities.
Are we voting on this tonight, or is this just a
Um, we
What, we can? I was gonna ask if the budget subcommittee had any input on whether or not they felt this was Ready to go, or is this still something you guys are working through?
Yeah, no, we discussed it and we were supportive of it. Matt, I think it addressed all the items that we've talked about.
Okay, well, with that said, then I would say we could vote to take this as the final guidelines that they will, I guess, solidify if we're ready to do that. If there's a motion for it.
Move to accept the 20, uh, 27 budget guidance document as presented.
Motion by Michael, second by Megan. Any more discussion on this? Alright, all in favor? Megan, let's thank you.
Thank you. And the personnel update. Hiring is slowing down, but we are hiring a lot of stipend positions at this point.
Could I just ask one question? What is the PRISM council at Brookside?
It is a, we got the PRISM two and PRISM three grant to bring in exponential learning and part of the requirement of that grant is to have a literacy committee.
I just didn't see the tie to, got it, thank you.
Yes, it's a new grant.
Perfect, thanks.
Thank you very much. Move on to the consent agenda. We have just a few things on here, so I will fly through this quickly. Tonight, the consent agenda is going to include the approval of 15 warrants and the amount of $1,560,898.01. The approval of minutes from the September 4th, 2025 regular meeting And professional development in the amount of $7,791.48. Motion to approve. Motion by Brendan, second by Michael. All in favor?
Oh, sorry. Don't you do a little discussion in between, or no?
We're not supposed to. Is there something that you need?
My only Sorry. My only concern, Matt, is in your update from the minutes. It says OPM interviews were held yesterday and a selection has been made. I wasn't sure that that was true last time, and I did just wasn't sure if it mattered from the building process standpoint, and if it doesn't, I'm fine. I just didn't want to say that we, a selection was made two weeks in advance before it was made. That was my only, sorry.
Um, it was made
It was made?
Okay, perfect.
No, no notification was
No, it was made by the OPM committee. It's not approved yet.
Thank you.
On September 4th, that was true, Michael? Perfect, thank you. Sorry, I just wanted to make sure.
That was the same day, wasn't it?
It was pretty, it was
Perfect. That's all. I was just sensitive to
Thank you for catching that.
Yep.
Alright. Thank you. We voted on that already, so we'll carry on with it. Subcommittee updates.
Paul C., you saw what happened today.
Excellent update, thank you.
Did we vote on that?
We did, yeah.
Okay, sorry.
Budget also, Matt. We went through a few things. We talked about upcoming contract negotiations, because there's actually a few, including the transportation and the teachers' contracts. So those would be heavy lifts. We wanted to go through those, particularly when took us through the RFP for transportation as well. We talked through the audit and the results, as well as all the action items. It went through those in detail, so that was also very helpful when to get that update. We talked through the budget guidance document, as you just saw, overall FY27 planning, and then hit on each of the warrant articles, so all items we've hit upon here as well.
Excellent.
You can see it quickly. Facilities, as you know, met, and we discussed the HVAC assessment of Stacy and the proof at here at Milford High School.
Fantastic. Future agenda items.
So the athletic participation, discussed there. Also, kind of in line with that is the fundraising policy. Mike kind of made a little mention there, about fundraising, and it just, again, I think that this keeps, it's on the list.
Yeah.
Keeps coming in and then going away, coming in, going away, so
It's got me. Point of clarification. Can, do you want it as an agenda item, or just for us, we can follow up in an email on the athletic part, sorry, the athletic piece.
Email would be great.
Yeah, that should be fine. As far as the participation, yeah, if I have questions, then we can address it then. So yeah, I'm fine with that. I think with that, it's just more breaking it down from men's and women's sports and
Yep, I'm gonna
What's spring, summer, fall.
What I was thinking with Pete, is this okay to talk, Lauren? What I was thinking with Pete is like As the first, as each season kicks off, a breakdown of how many kids came out. I don't know if he has all this information at this point for the last group, but how many kids came out for the sport, how many made it, how many teams you have. And we'll go with the fall teams, then we'll go with the winter, when the winter rolls around, then we'll go with the spring.
Yeah, and I think to Megan's point, talked about Stacy and just seeing what are we getting for either additional or reduced participation.
It's a lot. It's like 80 kids and girls volleyball, for example.
It's great.
Which is great. I think that's, those are the numbers we're looking for.
Whatever data goes together, having some sort of trend to see is important, yeah.
Cool. Thank you. Any other future agenda items?
Yeah, it wasn't done.
I don't have a little more space.
Most of this I've already brought up too anyways, but I'll bring it up. So the EV bike policy, again, I brought that up on the side, just again, and Was brought up also in facility subcommittee, because you, I'm not sure if you noticed, there's some new signage, so Craig will Have created that, so there are some new signage that is up for no EV bikes on the bike paths on school grounds. And then, that's it, yeah.
Is that on your list for subcommittee as well?
So EV bike policy.
It is. Craig's working bike, scooter.
There are any
I was wondering, it's breaking news, right?
Where that goes, because I know some, some school districts are actually outlawing them altogether. See where that goes.
You're done?
Yes.
Thank you. Appreciate all of those. Alright, so looks like there's nothing else, so we can proceed with ending this open session tonight. We do not have executive session, so I just need a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Motion by Michael, second by Megan. All in favor?